We'll now call this regular council meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. We're going to welcome everyone who's come to the meeting tonight. We've got a house, a house full and all those that are watching on G-10 television. We're going to begin the meeting by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Logan Sosa, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this most beautiful day, give you thanks for living in the city of Jacksonville and all the blessings and benefits you bestow upon us corporately and individually. We give thanks for all those who exercised their freedom, their right, their privilege of voting yesterday. We give thanks for all those who offered their name for a particular office and we especially give thanks for all those who are elected or re-elected. Life is about service. First and foremost is service to you, our God, and then it's service to our families and to our fellow citizens in your name. We pray that all these who were elected will commit themselves to serving you by serving others. We pray for our mayor and for our council, who tonight begin deliberations on some difficult decisions, budget decisions. Give them your guidance and your direction as always. We pray for our military serving us here and around the world, for their safety, for their anxious families. Give your guidance and direction to each of us as we live out our lives, for we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, you have before you a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's a couple of little things on here on the consent agenda, item number six, your motion to approve. I want you to please delete item six and add, you should have an addition to this that's been given to you, so ordinance amendment on budget of positions for transportation services, add that as number nine. I'm sorry, just, just add it as an additional consent item.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Discussion here none in favor, signify with C and A?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. First, first thing we're going to do is we're going to make a presentation tonight and Dr. Washington, if you would accompany me down front, please.
Mrs. Sutton, who is the president of the local Georgetown High School Alumni Association, as well of, as well as other officers with the various different fraternal organizations representing Mr. J.W. Broadhurst tonight, if you could just please come up and stand around Mrs. Sutton as the mayor reads the proclamation honoring Mr. Broadhurst.
So, this is Mrs. Sutton, the standing to your honor, Mrs. Sutton.
I saved her about forty steps, didn't I?
Come on. Hey Sammy. How you doing?
Thank you.
Perfect. Whereas, the city of Jacksonville would like to acknowledge and express its sincerest appreciation for the life and legacy of John William Broadhurst. And whereas, Mr. J.W. Broadhurst was educated in the Seven Springs Public Schools and in 1929 earned a bachelor of science degree from Agricultural and Technical College of North Carolina in Greensboro, master of arts in education from the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor, Michigan in 1940, in Ann Arbor, Michigan in 1944, and completed additional studies at Columbia University Teachers College in New York City, New York. And whereas, he served as principal of Georgetown High School for thirty-one years, from 1935 until 1966. He was responsible for educating African-American students residing in the city of Jacksonville and Onslow County. He required all qualified teachers to have specialized degrees and under his leadership, it became the first high school in Onslow County to receive accreditation by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. Whereas, under the guidance of Mr. J.W. Broadhurst, Georgetown High School established a marching band, a drama club, male and female athletic programs, and in 1955, became the first football team in Onslow County, black or white, to win the NC State four A championship. In 1968, Bob Grant became the first alumni drafted into the National Football League by the Baltimore Colts and subsequently the Washington Redskins. Whereas, Mr. J.W. Broadhurst was a champion for advancements in the entire community, giving back through his leadership as a member and past basilias of new Alpha Chapter of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, treasurer and past master of Mount Orbe, Masonic Lodge Number Seventy-three, treasurer of the Arabian Temple Number Forty-two of New Bern, and a thirty-third degree mason, setting the example for citizenship, being a mentor to the youth, and always placing the needs of others above his own. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Tuesday, May thirty-first, 2022, J.W. Broadhurst Day in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage his family and friends to join me in celebrating his accomplishments, his dedication to his students, and his commitment to our community. And I'm going to present this. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Alice Fay Davis Sutton, the president of the North Carolina Chapter of Georgetown High School Alumni Association, and a 1961 graduate of Georgetown High School, the first accredited high school in Onslow County. Asked GHS to stand at this time. I ask all GHS students and those that want to be friends of GHS to please stand. That means everybody, please stand. We appreciate the time and service given for this very meaningful event. Why meaningful? Mr. J.W. Broadhurst, known to all of us, we never knew that he was J., John William Broadhurst, so it was JW. Mr. J.W. Broadhurst, our principal, our mentor, our servant leader, who dutifully provide a quality education that met our individual and collective needs. He told us at many, many occasions, "I have never had biological children, but I do have children. All of you are my children." As he walked the halls of GROGHS, this sentiment was exemplified to the fullest every single day. Now, you can go, don't clap if you want to. Now, I'm going to do one thing, and I want you to do just what Mr. Broadhurst would say, "That's enough." I want you to say, as we said it, "G-H-S," come on! G-H-S. That's it. Thank you.
How do you want to do this?
Can we? Oh, no, no, you can't leave.
No, no, we're not done, we're not done yet.
Can I have you two gentlemen to bring this forward without my bailing? Yep, still uncovered, still covered up.
I got it, I got it, I got it. Wait, 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 wait.
Just cover.
No, I know, you have to put it here.
That's what I'm trying.
Yeah.
Yes, and that'll be perfectly fine.
Let me take mine. Okay. We good? Yeah, we're good, we're good. Okay, I got it. I got it, I got it, I got it. All right. With this auspicious occasion, many individuals in this room may not have known Mr. J.W. Broadhurst personally, and I am one of those individuals, but I can make a testament, and I know he is not going to be happy with me, the closer to my Mr. J.W. Broadhurst would be Mr. McKinley Smith, who was my principal at Belle Fort Elementary School. So the love and admiration that you have for Mr. Broadhurst is understandable, because as I was sharing with Mr. McKinley, he just doesn't know the many lives of children he has touched in Onslow County, and I being one of them. Many of the alumni, the Masonic Lodge, I know you and you know me personally because of your relationships with my parents, and that I am forever grateful. So tonight, as councilwoman, I have three gifts that I would like to bestow with the Georgetown Alumni Association. Through my research, I was able to find a replica of Mr. J.W. Broadhurst's Bachelor of Science from 1929, and at that time, it was not entitled North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University, it was entitled Agricultural and Technical College of North Carolina. He graduated 1929 with a Bachelor of Science degree.
I'll chime in in a few minutes. My research did not stop there. I was able to find a replica of his Master of Art in Education, 1944, from the University of Michigan.
For a man such as Mr. Broadhurst, to be able to accomplish a Bachelor of Science, 1929, from a historically black college and university, and to be able to obtain a Master of Art from a patrimony-white university in 1944, is just as significant and as important as obtaining a doctorate degree in 2022. Mayor, can I have you hold this for me?
You ready?
Mrs. Sutton, my personal gift back to the Georgetown Alumni Association is to present you with a check for $5,000 to establish Mr. J.W. Broadhurst Scholarship Fund. In honor of a man who gave so much, in honor of a man who was tried so much, and he may not have received his honors while he was living, but maybe, just maybe, when he and the good Lord are just walking the face of Jacksonville, they will rest a little bit longer to see the goodness of all of the lives personally, directly, and indirectly that he has made on the citizen in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Oh, thank you. Thank you. This is awesome. Let's, come on, God, thank you, everybody. I'm not good with surprises, but we, as the Georgetown Alumni Association, will guarantee that we will use this for the benefit of our children and our community. Thank you so very much.
Before the group descends, you guys can stand up and take a picture. You're so free to come forward.
We're going to done with this one.
Miss Sutton, you want to move this?
No points. Is that where you want to go?
Yeah. My back went out. Because I came back. My back went out.
Dr. Washington.
So, before everyone sits down, can we just have one representative from each of the groups behind us?
I would just like to hand to Mr. Broadhurst's scholarship committee, I would like to give a magic.
We have a couple of people that just want to make a comment, comments about Mr. Broadhurst, and before Mrs. Lois Newton, Georgetown High School Alumni Association.
She's a school teacher.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. I thought I would be remiss if I didn't say something. I met Mr. Broadhurst when I was five years old, just before starting school at Georgetown. He took me to school my first day at age six. I'd attended Georgetown the entire twelve years. I didn't come from a fetal school. And then after my graduation from college, he saw me after church and asked me if I needed a job, and I certainly did need one. So I told him yes, and he told me to come over to the school after the ten-day count the next week. He gave me my first job in Onslow County. And I worked at Georgetown, and most of these are my former students. I worked at Georgetown until the high school was closed in 1966, and I was transferred to Richland High School. My favorite memory of Mr. Broadhurst was that he was always kind, always friendly. He never raised his voice, but we knew he meant business. He had the teachers to stand outside the door as classes changed, classes changed each day, and that was to keep these people straight. But anyway, I just had to say something about him. I dearly loved him. He was more like a father to me, because my father had passed when I was quite young, aged four, and he always looked out for me until his death. Thank you.
My name is Omar Myers. I'm the deputy at Oasis of Alley Temple Number Two-Five-Six of the shrine. I did not know Mr. Broadhurst. However, in Arabian Temple Number Forty-two, which I am a past potentate of, there was a picture of him up on the wall, as it is in Mount Orbe Lodge, and we were the people to look up and go, "Who is that guy?" Because of his look, if you just look at him, you can tell that he is somebody. And we just had to show up today from the ancient Egyptian Arabic word, the Nobita Mystic Shrine, to recognize that we are honored that he was a member of what we are part of, and that's what keeps us proud. Thank you.
Good evening. Jacob Evans. I knew Mr. Broadhurst from Mount Orbe Lodge Number Seventy-three in Jacksonville, North Carolina, met him 1980, when I was going through the process. And he had one comment, that was a poem Omegas had to learn, there was a phrase in there we had to remember. He would always say, "See it through." Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, public comment, no one has signed up for public comments, so we're going to go to adoption of the minutes and consent items. Yeah, minutes from the May third, 2022 workshop meeting.
Move for adoption of the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Any discussion here none in favor, signify with C and A?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and recess the meeting and again, thank everybody who came for the presentation. I thought it was a very nice, nice presentation, a nice gesture on the part of Dr. Washington here, I think.
And Mr. Saunders.
And, and Mrs. Saunders too. That's, that's really great. That's, that's, that was very nice, very kind of you. So at this time, we're going to recess.
Yes, the presentation is going to be as long as you just saw. Mayor and council, it's a real privilege to be with you tonight as we continue our discussion on the budget. As you know, you have been doing this for probably February, March, April, and now we're in May. You have met on numerous occasions, you've held a public hearing. We are now to May eighteenth. As we mentioned before, tonight's discussion is going to be on compensation, diversity training, potentially finalize the budget or not, and then possibly meet on Monday night, the twenty-third, or not, or have a special meeting at some point. You potentially could adopt the budget on June the seventh. You are required to adopt it, to adopt it by June thirtieth. With the election now behind us, it would be our recommendation that if you do not, if you do not adopt it on June the seventh, that you have a special meeting either June the twentieth, so this council is the one that adopts the budget, or sometime between June seventh and June twentieth. As we begin this, first thing I want to do is thank Mr. Thomas. It's a sad goodbye, but I will tell you, 12 years ago, when we started this together, he is the person who said, "I want to see all thousand-page budget." And every year over the last 12 years, he has gone through, was it 2,000 pages?
And I asked Gaia, I said, "Please, reduce the budget." So, the next year is in like an 8-point type. So, she just reduced the type. It went from 1,000 to 600 pages.
You know, what the public sees in these meetings is simply what I'm going to call the icing. What each of you has done over the last four or five months is to literally go through page by page and look at the tremendous expenditures. You have to remember, we are a business. We are a $100 million business. I think any of you who grew up in Jacksonville, if you ever were told that your city government was a $100 million business, you'd say, "Wait a second. You must have us confused with Jacksonville, Florida." Now, for the record, there are a lot of people who are confusing us with Jacksonville, Florida because every week we get calls from somebody down there. But you are a business and you're to be commended. And as we have said before, you sit as the board of directors of not just the city government, but of the water and sewer operation, of the sanitation operation, of the stormwater operation. You wear many, many hats. So, tonight, as we continue with this long process, which is extremely important, I commend each of you for what you do. Dr. Washington asked at the end of the last meeting to give a quick review of revaluation. So, I'm going to start with that. By law, every county in North Carolina must revow their property at least every eight years. The decision on the time is the county commission. The county commission in 2010 began to do the revows on a four-year cycle. What is revow? It is the process of conducting a mass appraisal of all real estate parcels in the entire county. Since the county made the decision in 2010, you've had revows in 2010, 14, 18, and 22. What is revenue neutral? Now, if these are not bureaucratic words, I'm not sure. These come right out of the CPA manual for finance directors in North Carolina. It's the calculation of the tax rate that produces the same amount of revenue after revaluation as the governmental units would have received before revaluation with the addition of natural growth. Let's put it in layman's land. What it actually, layman's language, not layman's land. So, I almost got tied up with NC State there. Simple. If before revaluation, the property revenue, tax revenue generated by the city was 28 million, then after revow, it has to be 28 million. I want to note, though, due to revaluation of property, the individual property tax actually paid may increase or decrease because of a specific property value change. Let's talk about that a second. Each one of you has now received, and every taxpayer and property owner in the city and the county has received a notice that says, "Here's your new value." Several of you have shared with me how much your value went down. Everybody in the room whose value went down, raise their hand. Okay. A lot of people saw their values go up. What is the tax rate neutral? The tax rate that produces the revenue-neutral property tax revenue. In other words, if before the tax rate needed to produce $28 million was 60, and now the tax rate needed to produce $28 million is 50, that becomes the neutral rate. What you have to decide is what is the tax rate for the coming year? And that's what we're going to be discussing. Giving you a little perspective, these are the actual tax rates for FY '22. You can see the county, all of the smaller municipalities, and you can see yours. Remember, everybody who's in a municipality also has the pleasure, the pleasure to pay county taxes. Okay? I see y'all are doing the same thing I'm doing. But these are the tax rates before revaluation. Let's look at a little bit about the history of Jacksonville. In 2012, your tax rate was 53.8. It stayed 53.8 until 2015. We're going to come back to that date. It has stayed 64.2 until today. From a historical standpoint, revow 2010, 53.8; 2014, 53.8. Guess what happened in 2018? Somewhere between 5th, 14, and 18, revow, what happened? The county happened. The county changed the formula for sales tax. And it caused the former council to have to raise property taxes here 10 cents. Without that, you could legitimately state that the taxes in the city have been 53.8 for a long time. Now, what about historic revenue? If you notice from 12 through 23, in 2012, or FY '12, the budget or the revenue from property tax was 18,300,000. We're projecting 23,600,000. That's the estimate or the budget is built upon. What does that actually mean? In 10 years, the revenue from property tax grew by 10 million, by $5 million. You multiply or divide that, and I know I'm not doing math in public, so I got confused there. If you divide 10 into that number, that means in a typical year, your revenue from property tax grew by half a million dollars. Now, if you think about all the growth, I had a fireman ask me once, "Well, now that we have the big Kohl's store and we have the big..." What's the store next to Kohl's? Arlington Kohl's. What is that bringing in, like $200,000 more revenue? No. $20,000 apiece. People don't realize growth and taxes have some connection, but it doesn't make us rich. It doesn't even begin to make us rich. Again, the average growth, well, a decade's worth of growth was 5.7 million. Average growth was a half million dollars. I want you to remember some of the things that you have had to face in budgeting. What about sales tax? The city of Jacksonville continues to be the retail center of not just Onslow County, but this whole region. Now, you'll hear Mark Sullivan talk about leakage and all that stuff. Okay. So what? So, people go down to Wilmington and shop. The bottom line, though, is we are the retail center of Onslow County, Jones County, and the surrounding area. But look at what's happened on your sales tax revenue. In a decade, it has grown from 11,600,000 to 16 million. I also want you to remember in '15 and '16, what happened with the county changing the rate. You lost almost $2 million a year in sales tax. Combining that, you will see that over a 10-year period, you know, you look at the growth, we've grown together between sales tax and property tax by 4.3 million. Look at all the expenses that you have had in that time period. That's an average of $434,000. Together, we do average, between property tax half million and sales tax 400,000, we do average about a million dollars a year in growth, the two combined. Where does the million dollars go? Well, it goes to wages, health insurance, 800 megahertz, retirement, projects, loss of sales tax, loss of business license. I know technically we didn't call them business license, but most people understand the term "business license", and a lot of other things. I want you to remember, just in the health insurance, how much you have had to increase and how much the employees had to increase. I want you to remember the 800 megahertz. Ron, what was the 800 megahertz cost for the city? Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry. You wanted me to ask Mike that question. Chief, what was the cost?
Three million dollars.
Three million dollars. And guess what? That was a grant. It was a grant from the city taxpayers, not the federal government, not the state government, and definitely not the county. These are expenses that you and previous councils have had to face every year. Let's look at North Carolina retirement. This year alone, you're going up another almost 4% mandatory contribution. That is $400,000. Remember what your average growth is in either sales tax or property tax? One of the questions that most people don't even think about is, "How much are my city property taxes?" I want to show you and the public how much your property taxes are. You can see on the left-hand side that I left off a zero. So, I apologize for that because my computer skills never were very good. And apparently, in my future, they're not going to get any better. If you're in a $100,000 house, you currently pay $642, or you pay $53.56 and 50 cents. 50 cents. Isn't that the way we say it? 50 cents. A month. Most of our residents fall between $150 and $300,000. If you look at the values, most of the residents in Jacksonville are now assessed, appraised, I think is the correct term, between $150 and $300,000. Even at $300,000, your monthly bill is $160.50. I want to ask you. Anybody have a cellphone handy? Mr. Carter, would you raise your cellphone? Raise your right hand, cellphone in the hand. Do you solemnly swear that that is actually the city's cellphone?
Yes, sir.
And fortunately for you, you don't have to pay for it, right?
Yes, sir.
But if you were doing that on your own, as I will be doing in a week, you know how much I'm going to have to pay a month for that? Nothing. You know why? Because my wife's going to pay for it because she says I need a phone. I don't know why. But it's going to cost us over $100 a month. What do you actually get for your property tax? I can tell you what I get from the cellphone. The ability to communicate, the ability to take pictures, the ability to text, which is something I'm still trying to figure out how to do. But look at what you get from the police department, fire department, sanitation, streets, paving, transportation, planning, inspections, recreation. You get all of this plus more as a taxpayer. And I'm going to tell you, every one of us should be proud of the fact that we pay those taxes because, using a term that I usually don't use, return on investment? Look at the return on investment. I'll give you an example. Last night, Councilmember Jackson called me at, what, quarter to nine? 8:30, quarter to nine. He said, "Look, I've got a citizen who called me. His water's cut off. We can't figure out why. What can you do?" I said, "Well, there's not much I can do, but Wally can do a whole lot. So, let me call Wally." So, I called Wally and I said, "Here's the address. Can you find out what's going on?" Less than 10 minutes, he calls me back. Again, this is almost 9 o'clock at night. He said, "City has done nothing in the way of work in that neighborhood, and I checked the cutoff list. This citizen is not on the cutoff list. So, it's nothing that the city has done. But we're dispatching someone at almost 9 o'clock at night to go try to figure out what the issue is." That's the difference between living in the city and living in the county. And that's not a negative comment about the county. The county is not a municipal government. We are a full-service government. You get in life what you pay for. It is just that simple. You know, if you want a good hot dog, come by my house. But like most things in life, it's what you pay for that determines the quality of the service. And I will tell you, the people sitting around the room tonight and the other 561 or so employees that they represent, they are quality. There is no question about it. Unfortunately, we are losing that quality. And I'll give you an example. Today, I had a Parks employee, who I've been privileged to work in the dirt with, came by and said, "Mr. Richard, just want to thank you, but I'm going to work for the county, and I'm going to be able to make $3 an hour more than what the city is paying me." Today, I signed the, what are those forms called, PSAs?
Personal Action Form.
Yeah, yeah. I've only been here 12 years. Give me a break. Another one. Another employee leaving us. Why? Because of compensation. The taxpayers of this city have the same issues all of us have. And that is, how do they afford their bills? So, the discussion that we're going to have tonight is a difficult discussion because you, as the elected officials, have the burden of figuring out how much of the tax and how much of the citizens' revenue you are going to ask them to give. But what I ask you to remember is always this. What is the citizen getting? Is the citizen getting a person who's on call at 9 o'clock at night that comes to try to figure out the water problem? Is the citizen getting a policeman or a fireman at 3 o'clock in the morning because a prowler's breaking in their house? Compare the city services that you give through your employees to anybody. I won't mention Onslow County. I won't mention the Sheriff's Department. I didn't just mention them. How is sales tax distributed? Unfortunately, it's distributed by somebody else's decision. And let's talk about that. By state law, there are two methods available statewide. The ad valorem method and the per capita method. Fortunately for the city, several years ago, by special legislation, there was a local bill, I guess you'd call a local bill, John? A local bill that set up the blended method. What's the ad valorem method? Sales taxes are allocated in proportion to the property tax levied by a county and its municipalities in the previous fiscal year. The current method. What does that mean? Strictly on taxation. That's what that's saying. The next method is per capita. Well, that's pretty simple. It's based on population. The blended method is what? A combination with the understanding that no more than 60% can be ad valorem or no more than 60% can be population. Very bluntly, unfortunately for us and for our taxpayers, this is the method that the county decided several years ago. This is the method that every year, including this year, you have written a letter to the county commission. And you have asked them to change this. Why? Because it's unfair. That's my statement, not yours. You can decide whether you agree or disagree. What was the cost? $2 million. It's easy for the county to afford things. Why? Because they're the ones who are getting the bankroll. I'm going to probably be more blunt tonight than I normally am. I normally try to be very diplomatic. But this is my last meeting with y'all, most likely. So, why not just call it like it is? I'm going to apologize upfront. This method has cost you and your citizens millions of dollars over the years. The county commission didn't even give you the courtesy of returning your telephone call or even answering your letter. And I want the public to know that. Again, this is my last meeting, so I'm going to pretty much call it like it is. Because guess what? They can only be mad at you. They can't be mad at me because I'm leaving town. I'm real passionate about this. Why? Because it's our job as the employees to provide the services that our citizens deserve. And it's your job as the elected officials to figure out how we pay for it. And the county put you in a bind and have kept you in a bind. And the county put you in a bind and have kept you in a bind. I'm sure tomorrow the chairman of the county commission will call and thank me for those comments. I think the world of Chairman Wright, I'm serious about that. Here's a staggering thing that you need to be seriously aware of. What is the impact on the sales tax distribution if other governments raise their property tax? The answer, because the distribution formula is based upon property tax rate, if others raise their tax rate and the city does not... Would you like to read the last line for me?
No, you're doing five.
The city will lose sales tax. We have been told that the county commission is considering a six-cent tax increase. If the city government adopts the tax rate neutral number, you will lose one point two million dollars in sales tax next year. Let me repeat that. The county government is talking about a three-cent fire tax, and yes, they've said they're going to share it with us, and we're grateful for that. They're also going to add three cents, is what we're being told, to cover their ongoing expenses. That puts you in a bind. You'd like to keep your taxes as low as possible, but guess what? If you don't raise your own taxes, you're going to lose one point six, one point two million. And even though the county commission is saying, "We're going to give you back your part of your three cents," guess what? It most likely won't balance the one point two million dollars you're going to lose if you don't raise taxes. That's a terrible position to be in. I hope that in the years ahead, Senator Lozera, Representative Cleveland, Representative Shepard, have the opportunity to change the way sales tax is distributed. It simply is not fair. It simply is not fair.
And if it is changed, wasn't it, was it Representative Cleveland that passed a bill that you have to wait a year, delay in the process, so it's not an automatic change if it is changed?
And in fairness, Representative Cleveland did that in order to help protect municipalities. If you'll recall, the county commission, when they changed that, they didn't even give us the courtesy of an invitation to that meeting. Boom, it was done. Representative Cleveland felt, at least in my discussions with him, he felt that was unfair, and while changing it to a new formula will result in a one-year delay. It was really done as a safeguard so that municipalities would not have a major hit, just sudden shock. Employee compensation, employee competition. You asked for a survey. We sent out three surveys, one to the police department, one to the fire department, one to the general employees. We got back an extremely good participation. Here are the three things. You know, I did this to kind of be like Paul Harvey. Any of you folks watch Paul Harvey on Family Feud? What does he say when he gets to the end?
Steve Harvey.
What does that say? Oh, Paul Harvey. I'm a herd of them.
Yeah, no, no, we haven't heard of Paul Harvey. We're in Steve Harvey.
Okay. Steve Harvey. Let's do that again. I'm going to erase that like my granddaughter does. Let's do this again. Any of y'all watch? Who isn't?
Steve Harvey.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page. What's the program?
Family Feud.
Family Feud, good. Towards the end, he always says what?
And the survey says?
And what does he answer here? Somebody speak up. Compensation, health insurance, benefits, holidays. It didn't matter who you asked. We got a lot of great responses. The number, the number one, two, and three issues that your employees are facing are those issues. That's not a surprise. Let's talk a second about compensation. You have options. You could do a COLA of five percent or more, you could do a flat increase across all employees, you could do anything else. And tonight, I'm not asking you to make that decision. As you're going to hear at the end, so you might as well hear now, I'm recommending to you tonight, you make no decisions at all. What I'm recommending is that you take everything that I'm giving you tonight, absorb it, and decide when do you want to come back to make the tough choices. Because I'm going to tell you, there is no good news at the end of this presentation, other than the fact you won't have to listen to me again. Okay? None of the options are good options. You're losing employees every day to others. Let's spend a minute talking about an equal COLA. One of the nice things about an equal COLA is everybody gets the same percent. So if you give a five percent, a three percent, a six percent, whatever you give, everybody gets it. And there's also no compression. Remember, you have employees from this point all the way to this point, and whatever you do at one point, it affects everybody along the way. So a cost of living increase is what you normally do. It's a good way to do it. The cons are a percent of forty thousand versus a percent of eighty thousand. So let me give you an example. I'm going to test Mr. Thomas's math. Mr. Thomas?
Ten percent.
Yeah, well, let's just use ten percent. Ten percent of forty thousand is what?
Win-ten, four thousand.
Forty thousand?
Four thousand.
What's ten percent of eighty thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. Now, I don't think any of us expect you to give a ten percent raise, although everybody in the crowd would cheer tonight on that, I'm sure. The point being, though, is this. It's, if you look, a percent is different money. Life comes down to a lot of things. It really comes down to money. Twenty dollars is the same for me as it is for the mayor, as it is for any city employee. But guess what? Look at these numbers. Five percent, yet what? My baked beans cost the same thing as Mr. Bidner's. My baked beans cost the same as Lieutenant Philip Williams. My baked beans cost the same as any sanitation worker. And guess what today has brought us? As of eleven AM, we have a magic window in Mr. Massey's office. I don't know whether you've ever viewed through the magic window. The magic window looks at the petroleum industry. And the petroleum industry, magic window said at eleven AM this morning, that gas that cost two dollars two years ago is now four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Now, the magic window one day is going to change. Hopefully, when it changes, it will go down. Lately, the magic window has been stuck on going up. It doesn't matter who is to blame. It's the reality of the pain. That almost rhymed. I didn't mean to report that. That was good. One of the things about a flat increase, which I will tell you, a lot of people do not like flat increases, is this. Let's say that you gave four thousand dollars for every employee. Look at what you're getting. A forty thousand dollar employee gets ten percent, a sixty thousand dollar, and an eighty thousand dollar. The one benefit of the flat increase is what? The flat amount helps those who make the least. Whereas, I know some of you can't support that, and there are many reasons for it. The inverse of percent is this. A flat amount, the lower you are on the totem pole, the more you get percent-wise. Whereas, the other part, a percent, means the lower you are on the totem pole, the less money you get. Like I said, they're tough decisions here, folks. And the survey also said health insurance. We know that we have struggled, and we have passed on twenty-five percent, fifteen percent other increases. One of the options is for us to modify the plan. I'm going to tell you, that's not really an option. We have skeleton, we have skinned that plan down to the point, we have done everything we can to hold down the cost. One of the things that we're finding with our competition is that they are now paying all of the employee premium. Now, not the family, not the spouse, not the children. We don't quite do that. You remember a previous slide that says that a typical city employee pays about, I think it was thirty dollars, thirty-two dollars every paycheck, just to cover himself or herself. One other thing that we're finding is that people are now paying for dental and vision. These are expenses, folks, and you have to decide where are you going to put your money. One of the issues here is this. I don't think Ron would mind me saying this. Ron, are you on the city health insurance program?
No.
What program are you on?
Through the Tricare.
Through Tricare. So one of the disadvantages of doing number two is it doesn't really impact every employee. The advantage is, guess what? Thirty dollars a paycheck down to twenty-six paychecks is real money after taxes. And the survey said benefits and holidays. I don't know that everybody goes to church, but I will tell you, one of the most resounding comments that we have heard through the surveys, all three of them, return Good Friday to us. Now, the survey didn't say you're a Catholic, Baptist, Presbyterian, whatever, 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 or atheist. It just said, "Talk about your benefits." That's one of them. I'll remind you, the county currently has fifteen holidays. One other thing you could do, which I would certainly favor for the fact that it doesn't really impact your service level, but it does impact your overtime, is the possibility of adding a floating personal day. What is the floating personal day? It's a day that anybody, Wally can say, "Next Friday, I'm going to take my son fishing." One of our police officers over here can say, "Next Friday, I'm going to go just enjoy my family at the beach." It's an unplanned holiday, is what it is. It's a floating day. One thing you could also do is have no changes to those. But I will tell you, there are consequences to not addressing the concerns. I'll remind you again, the Parks employee came in today and say, "I love working here, I love Michael Cory, I love all of the people in Parks, I appreciate everything the city has done for me the last three years, but for three dollars more an hour, I'm going to become a janitor." His words, not mine, over at the courthouse. There is a cost to the competition. There is no question about it. The southeast region, as you have seen, for twenty-one was five point one percent. Boy, do I long for those days. I don't know whether you have, have watched what's happened. Stock market lost a thousand points today. Now, for a person who doesn't have a portfolio, I understand, but I'm telling you, this country inflation is eating us all. Baked beans, bread, gas, doesn't matter what it is. The cost of a mortgage, it will rise, what they call points, it will rise five times in the next year, is what I am being told. Each time, a quarter of a point. Every one percent of a cost of living increase that's given to the general fund, or given to the employees, not including the police department, who are in the step plan, but all those police officers and everybody else who's not in the step plan, it costs the general fund two hundred and three thousand dollars. It also costs water and sewer, it costs the other funds. So literally, every time a taxpayer or ratepayer goes up one percent, it's money. You have seen this before. Just to meet inflation, which is what a cost of living adjustment's supposed to be, you'd be at five percent. That's a million dollars. If you wanted to try to get an edge on the real inflation rate this year, at six percent or higher, pick any number you want. We do know that the police step plan, which we have talked about, will cost you five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's moving the entry-level police officer to forty-two thousand dollars. Mike would like to see it at forty-three, forty-four, forty-five. We lost a police officer two weeks ago to one of the beach communities, starting pay, moved from us from thirty-nine or thirty-eight thousand to forty-eight thousand dollars. I can tell you, and I hate to say this for the employees who are watching, you can't afford that. The taxpayer can't get us up to starting police officers at forty-six, forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars. But that's where your competition is. I will also say to you, it's a gracious thing for you to move to forty-two thousand for this step plan, but you will continue to lose people. We will continue, even though I won't be here, we're still the we. Together, if you gave a six percent plus step, you're looking at one point seven million. Now, remember, I told you before, there is no good news in this presentation. If your goal is that, you're looking at a minimum of a four cent above revenue-neutral tax. Remember, revenue-neutral in general numbers was fifty-four cents. You're currently at sixty-four-two. This would take it somewhere around fifty-eight. Here are my recommendations. First of all, for the police department, continue with the step plan, the employees seem to like it, for P-ones, twos, and threes. Threes, of course, being corporals and your telecommunications. That's five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And adjust each of the categories by four thousand dollars. That's how you get to the five hundred and eighteen thousand dollar number. That would be implemented the start of FY twenty-three. Now, I originally added here July the first. Technically, your fiscal year starts then, but the pay cycle is a little odd because of the twenty-six days, so I'm not going to say July first. Mike would like to see you do that immediately. Why? I'll tell you why. Because he has a BLEC class that's getting ready to graduate, and guess what? None of the officers. And how many are there, Mike? Twelve?
No, there's, I think around ten in that class that.
And how many out of them have applied for our jobs?
We didn't have any.
We didn't have any. Okay. Now, the rest of the police recommendations are, of course, to adjust the COLA like every other city employee, and then you're going to really be analyzing this every year. Personally, I don't see this wage competition for employees going away anytime soon. Your future manager and you are going to sit around this table the same time next year, and you're going to say, "Boy, I tell you, it just, you know, the national economy has got to change." That is not a political statement, that is a factual statement. We have to get people back to work. We have to get people where they are no longer incentivized to stay home. We have to get people where they will come to work, and they'll come to work for you and us at a competitive wage and not leave us. I'm doing a lot of preaching tonight, I'm not Baptist, but anyway. What about Fire and Emergency Services? The group that was in the step plan voted. I remember Mr. Thomas saying, "If they voted, they're telling us what they want." But it was a failure. I'm not quite sure you used a failure, I think you used the word it wasn't successful, so I apologize. So one of the things I recommend is that you formally vote to delete the Fire and Emergency Services step plan. What does that mean? They all go back to the cost of living adjustment plan. Some years, that's going to look pretty good, some years that may not look pretty good. I will also say to you, though, the same thing I've said to the fire department, we took you out of the general fund and put you in a step plan because you wanted it. Now we're taking it out of the step plan and putting it back in the general fund. That show sets. Fire and Emergency Services would go into the general step plan, the general cost of living plan, rather. the general cost of living plan, rather, with the start of FY twenty-three. And then adjustments, whatever you give to the rest of the employees. And, again, annual, analyze annually. This is a tough one. I really struggled with the cost of living increase, the tax increase that it would require, and also the flat number. The flat number is really attractive in one way because it does give most to the least. What I'm recommending to you is a cost of living adjustment of six percent. You have to decide, can you afford that? Can your taxpayer afford that? What that means is at a minimum, that's a four cent above tax neutral. Address compression with your wage adjustment fund, because remember, in the budget, you do have five hundred thousand dollars for wage adjustments. And then look at it annually. As far as these recommendations, I recommend you go ahead and add back Easter. And let me tell you why. You did a noble thing by establishing Freedom Day. Nobody in this country had addressed that social and racial issue. You were the first. You're to be commended for that. In order to do that, you said, "We're gonna keep the same number of holidays," which I thought was a wise decision, and that meant Easter went away. Now that the federal government has declared that as Juneteenth holiday, you did another noble thing. You said Freedom Day is now going to move to Juneteenth Day. So the employee's vacation day transferred. Think of it this way. If Freedom Day had never been adopted and Easter would have still been there when Juneteenth was passed as a national holiday, your employees would have gone from ten to eleven, most likely. I'm also recommending to help competition that you add a floating holiday. That will impact overtime in many departments, but not all. I also suggest that you study paying for the employee's health insurance. I can tell you, if you made that decision this year, it's over four hundred thousand dollars. So what I'm recommending there is that you study to see, under Ron's guidance and whoever the next manager, and Gail's guidance and the next finance director, can you work out something maybe over the next year or two years where you move yourself slowly into that? It doesn't get the employee there in one step, but any movement helps. Now, everything comes at a cost. Remember, in FY twenty-two, one cent of property tax gave you three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. One cent of property tax in FY twenty-three gives you four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. But I also wanted to remind you of this. Just because the number of one cent changed, it didn't mean you got any new money. Why? Because revaluation is not intended to give you more money. It's intended to balance who is paying the money. So you didn't get a gift from Revout. I want the public to understand, when they look at their property tax, and I know several of you have told me what your tax, you're gonna pay more at a lower millage rate than you paid last year at a higher millage rate or tax rate. Why? Because your house value in this market changed. Now, what am I recommending for y'all to do? Well, I'm recommending that you do, and I don't mean this lightly, I recommend that you do a lot of praying, that you also do a lot of serious consideration about the dilemma that you're facing. You got a dilemma on one side with great employees who are leaving you. You got a dilemma on this side on citizens who are being impacted by inflation, many of whom aren't on an income that changes. And what I recommend is that you do nothing tonight other than accept my thanks for listening. And then decide, when do you want to come back to bite this very difficult dilemma? You've been kind to me. What can I answer or clarify?
I got a question. You know, in our discussions of this, and we've always talked about, you've mentioned about driving distance being a factor as far as losing people. If you have an employee here that's making thirty-eight thousand dollars and he can drive to Atlantic Beach to make fifty thousand dollars a year, that's probably a no-brainer for that employee. What I'd like to see is some type of study of the market. I'm not talking about last year's market. I'm talking about this year's market with what's gonna be happening. We gotta bleed. I mean, I think everybody acknowledges that. We're losing people. We're losing valuable people that we've invested in over time. We put through training. How much of a price tag are we gonna attach to that? You know, because if you lose them, you're gonna have to try to find somebody again. You're gonna go through that whole search in a environment that's just not yielding employees right now or qualified employees. So you're gonna have to start all over again with training. You're gonna start all over again, you know, with the experience. I mean, it's just a mess that we're in right now. And again, it goes back to those first slides you talked about tonight. We were put in this box. You know, we were kind of confined in this box when the sales tax changed. It took a lot of money. We're not talking about just two million dollars. Actually, it was two point six million that we lost. But you multiply that by how many years?
Eight.
Eight years. That's a lot of money, folks. That's twenty million dollars. Take a couple of cents. A lot could have been done as far as keeping our employees if that money had not evaporated into thin air. You know, it's just, it just galls me that we're stuck in this position. And like I said, we gotta do something.
Well, the other thing, Mayor, I would also remind you of. If the county does raise it six cents and you don't do something defensive, you're gonna lose another one point two million dollars. I mean, and what is that? Using the four hundred thousand dollar percent? That's three more cents of tax just to stay neutral.
And of course, you know, with that six cent they're talking about, they're talking about three cent for the fire tax, and supposedly, we're gonna get a pro-rata share of that coming back to us, but...
Say that again. How's it gonna work?
Well, they're gonna shoot money back to the municipalities from that three cents they collect. But who the heck knows how they're gonna apportion that money? You know, it may very well be apportioned by property value, too.
Three cents of the six or three cents?
Yeah, three of the six.
And remember this, again, make the point. If they raise it and say, "We're gonna give three cents back to you," and you leave the neutral at fifty-four, you've lost one point two million. From their three cents, you may not even get one point two million.
You know, I can tell you, you know, we've gotta do something. Our employees are very important. It's very important that we keep, at least try to keep the ones we've got. Because, you know, again, you know, it's hard to find people that wanna work for one thing. And, you know, it's just a shame when you give away your experience. I mean, there's a lot of people we've lost at police department. We've lost a lot of institutional knowledge as a result of them going to these other departments. And, you know, it's been like that forever. It's not just a new thing, you know. We constantly had, we've always been known as a training ground or the runway for people to take off to other agencies, other careers. But, you know, I just think that, I just think that we really need to put some consideration into this because, like I said, you're bleeding to death. You need to stop it.
I think if we don't at least match the county's increase, we're more or less validating their position in moving to the ad valorem tax rate in the first place. They know it hurts us, and they're gonna hurt us even further by increasing their property taxes if we don't at least match it.
Tough decisions. And again, what I'm recommending, that you do nothing tonight. What I would ask Rose to do is to get this presentation, you can put some of it on fast forward, but get this presentation, go into a private room and give some serious thought.
What's the tax point now on the fiscal year? Four hundred and forty-one thousand, is that right?
Yes, we're four hundred and forty-one thousand.
I do wanna see the market. I wanna do, see some market comparison. Not just what's happened last year, but I wanna see what we're gonna be up against this year, too. Because there's, you know, Wilmington, I understand, I mean, of course, again, there's places that we're not gonna compete with because we don't have the tax base to compete with them in a city like Wilmington, but they're still gonna steal your employees.
And the other part I wanna stress, the market comparison we're gonna do is about here. I have never, and I remember Mr. Thomas early on, when I was much younger, didn't have as much gray hair. I presented some market data, and he politely said, "You know, Asheville's a nice place, but it isn't us." You remember saying that, sir?
About a lot of places, yeah.
About a lot of places. He also said that about Raleigh and Charlotte, a lot of places. The data that we will give you will be right here. Now, we've given you some of the data. It's driving distance data. It's the people, you know, who, because again, if you have to sell your house and move your family, take kids out of school, that's not really competition. Although I will tell you, we did lose a young lady in finance this week who accepted the job in, where's Gail? Where's she going downstairs? To Charlotte?
Raleigh.
To Raleigh. Okay, might as well be Charlotte.
But you know, meeting to Wilmington and back is realistic on a daily basis. So, I mean...
We'll get your data again from New Bern.
New Bern, Bravon.
Around in this area, what people would be able to live here and drive to. And it won't just be police and fire, it'll be John.
General employees.
Dr. Woodruff, what's the average years of experience we're losing?
Well, if you remember a slide last week, we showed you the, how many employees have been here fifteen years or more? I don't remember exactly what it was. I'm gonna say it's like a hundred and fifty or something. The number of employees who've been here three years or less was like two hundred. But I'll get that back to you, too. What that shows you is you have a very green workforce now. And one-third of your workforce has been here less than three years, so.
I wish we had the money that we've spent on Springstead studies to study salaries, you know, that...
Well, let me talk about that a second. There's nothing, there are organizations out there who are saying, "We need to do a new compensation study." You don't need to. There's nothing wrong with your compensation program. When, before I got here, Ron or somebody convinced y'all to do a study, and you did a great job at Springstead. The Springstead study gave us the tools to keep it updated. And Kimberly and Tom and Helen and everybody in the HR department, they keep that thing up to date. What the Springstead study did not anticipate is COVID, employees leaving the workforce, and everything we're seeing with inflation. So I will tell you, don't spend any money with a new study. I mean, that'd just be...
Just throwing money away.
You know, helping a consultant retire early. And by the way, I'm thinking about becoming a consultant. You don't need a new study. What you need to do is address the dilemma that you're facing.
We've got a study, like you say. We've got a pay plan that works perfectly. So it's gotta be funded properly. That's the key.
I have a question. Mr. Carter, do you know of any precedent cases in U.S. law where municipalities have sued counties for unfair taxation? And, you know, I'm almost thinking, I just hate to use this term, so I'm gonna piggyback on Dr. Woodruff's forgiveness. It's almost like, I just hate to say it, prostitution taxation. You've got somebody working for you while you are basically claiming all the goods.
Pardon me, Dr. Washington. Have a little more. I was ready for it.
I'm just saying. You know, when you really think about it, Jacksonville being the largest municipality, generating the most amount of money, but we're paying for everyone else's livelihood while we're the ones that is being compromised. So I'm just, I'm just saying, there just has to be some type of governmental law that says even if the county commissioners in a particular state is legislating how much taxes is going to be assessed, you, there should be some way of monitoring it so that one group isn't necessarily benefiting at an exponential rate than what someone else is. And losing two million dollars a year, you know, no wonder they can afford to hire our employees at our expense because basically, you're robbing Peter really to satisfy Sally, not Paul anymore. I'm just saying.
You have to understand that cities are a creation of the legislature.
Right.
So are the counties.
No, the counties are created by the North Carolina constitutions or something. There is no evidence, that I'm aware of, the county is doing anything that's following the law as it's written, whether that law, you like it or you don't like it. I'm sure there may be cases, but again, unless there's some evidence that the county's not following the state law as it's written, I don't think you have much of a case. I have certainly, my law firm previously was party to where Board of Education sued the county right here in this county. And finally, a decision was made as far as appropriation of funds to educate our children. But I'm not aware of any lawsuit from any municipality suing the legislature or suing a county that was not following the state law as far as how. The state law has been presented as what it's set out for, either ad valorem or per capita.
Just remember that magic number of six percent, what the county is doing and how much it's gonna affect us. It was excellent presentation. Very good. You are done, right, with the presentation itself?
I'm finished with that. We do have a discussion that we can have tonight, or Ron can present to you at a later date relative to equity and rates and training and that. It's up to you as to whether you'd like to continue tonight or hear that at a different date. The other thing I want you to think about, though, is when do you want to get back together to discuss this issue?
Next week's final meeting.
How about special meeting on Monday?
And for the public, that the reason why Monday is there is because technically, that's my last day. John reminded me, my contract does not expire until twelve midnight on the twenty-third.
From five to twelve.
You say more, Esther? Plus, I think a benefit for the council and the mayor is that you deal with this most difficult decisions and issues while it is fresh in your minds. If you let it linger for three weeks or whatever, again, you send the passion. Dr. Woodruff has spoken to you tonight. And it's kind of like writing a book and not seeing how the end is. You know, I think for him and for your employees, that it needs to be wrapped up, if at all possible, giving guidance to the finance director is how this should be set forth for your June seventh meeting as far as adoption of the budget.
That's how I see it. I hope that's the way most of y'all said, to go ahead and just concentrate on it, do your own deliberation over a period of time until Monday, when we come back Monday, if that's all right with y'all. They will hammer it out, hammer the details out at that time.
Sounds fine.
Sounds good.
We'll bring your model jacket.
Richard, I might bring this, but could you do a quick flip back for me? Just, that's what I'm gonna know when you get there.
Let me know when I get there. Let me, let me know when I get there.
One more.
Forward. This one, sir.
Okay. So, I'm gonna regret this, I can tell. So you said, the 6% figure is?
1.2 million.
Just the general, oh, I, so we're just working general fund?
Yeah, the numbers were just the general fund. Yeah. If you look all the way across the board.
Oh, I see.
1.6.
1.6. Oh, I see.
For everything.
Okay.
Yeah. That helps me. Thank you very much for your courtesy. I will also say to you that I will look forward to the 23rd, but I will also regret.
And so will we. Yes, sir. And Dr. Woodruff, he don't want a whole lot of hoopla and everything, but I certainly appreciate you.
Keep it low.
I, I'm respecting that. Yeah. Anyway, on a, on a happier note, does anyone wanna motion to adjourn, or do you wanna?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Paul Taylor?